Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to our republic, to the Constitution of America, to the public, to the citizens, and to the liberty of each and every citizen.
Welcome to beautiful but foggy Half Moon Bay for our May 22, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner DeBoer?
Here.
Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
Vice Chair Holt?
Here.
And Commissioner Benjamin is absent today.
Can we go through the approval of minutes? So we have three sets of minutes. April 10, 2018. Does anybody have any comments on the April 10 minute meetings? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move we approve April 10 minute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So done. Can I get, so on the April 24, 2018, I was not present for this Planning Commission Do we have any comments for the April 24 meeting? Oh, Jill?
We don't have a quorum of you tonight for these minutes. We only had three commissioners present that night, and one of them was Commissioner Benjamin. So we didn't know when we made the packet whether or not he'd be able to attend. We also would like to just make a note about the next set that you're looking at. On the 8th, we did not have a quorum, but we did take public comment, and so we did prepare a set of minutes. You don't need to approve them. In fact, I don't even know that you can, but just please acknowledge them, and we will file them as part of the record.
I'd like to get a motion to acknowledge the minutes from May 8, 2018. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So acknowledged. I will make a comment on the May 8 meeting. It's my responsibility, along with city staff's responsibility, to make sure we have quorum for public meetings. There was a miscommunication on May 8. Apologies to the members of the public who came on May 8 and wasted their time because we could not, we did not have quorum. City staff and I have put in place controls to make sure this doesn't happen again in the future. So anyway, we will move on. So now we have, this is the, this is the portion of our meeting where we have public comment. We have, this is an opportunity for people to speak about items that are not on the agenda, and there's quite a few comments here, and I'm just going through all of them. I will mention, as I look at the notes, that if you hear stony silence from your Planning Commission when you're talking about something that's not on the agenda, it's not because we have an opinion one way or another. It's because, as a public meeting, we're not allowed to really go into any comment on these items. So just, just wanted to mention that to you. I know sometimes these public meetings can be a little confused, confusing with all of their procedures. So that said, I'm going to ask Mike Ferrara to come up to speak, followed by Christina And for those of you unfamiliar with our AV system, please make sure the green light is on and the microphone is close enough for our viewers at home to hear you.
I came here to speak yet again on the Surf Beach proposal in public comment because I am puzzled about one aspect of it, and I've always been kind of puzzled about it, which is that when a proposal is brought forward that's been covered by a planned development in our local coastal program certified by the Coastal Commission, it seems to me that it's, if the project that's brought forward is extremely inconsistent with what the LCP says, why do we have to suffer through years of EIRs and permit hearings, et cetera, et cetera? Why is that not something that we can put a stop to for incomplete application? Because this project really is inconsistent with what the LCP calls out. And that's a question that can be answered later. I know it can't be addressed tonight, but it would seem to me that this city could save an awful lot of time and energy by saying, "Sorry, this is not what's in the LCP. It's not even close. Let's not waste each other's time." Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Conklin, followed by Robert Cooney.
Good evening. I agree with what Mike said. I think the city should simply reject the permit application based on all of the ways in which it breaches the local coastal plan, plus the traffic, plus the fact that no demonstrated need for another hotel has been shown. But what I want to speak to is my area of expertise, which is environmental degradation. I'm writing a book on sea level rise and coastal erosion, and I wanted to read a couple of short passages from this book. It's called "Living with the Changing California Coast." It's written by a leading world expert on coastal erosion, Gary Griggs at UC Santa Cruz. And he says, "For many people, building on the coast or living on shoreline is the California dream, but it can be a nightmare during severe winter storms. Thirty-three homes were completely destroyed by waves in January 1983, and additional losses occurred in 1998. Before one approves new construction or, and invests one's life savings in that ocean view, it is important to realize that the entire coastline of the state is subject to wave attack and erosion, and anything built to protect property is going to fail eventually." And he goes on to say, specifically about our part of the coast, this is a photo of that apartment building at Miramar that's now wrapped in riprap. So he's speaking very specifically about our area. Find the relevant section here. Accelerated cliff erosion extends one mile south of the breakwater to the community of Miramar, where another part of the county road, several homes and businesses, and an apartment building are threatened. Approximately 1,600 feet of riprap, emplaced between 1978 and 1983, offer only temporary protection for these exposed structures. Development of homes continues on this low marine terrace. South of Miramar, the low eroding bluff is replaced by sand dunes, and the effect of the breakwater has been diminished." And he goes on, later in the book, to talk about the, the fact that any planning commission or any home builder or anybody who's thinking about developing on any cliff anywhere in this state needs to look at the 50-year timeframe, because coastal erosion is episodic. It can be stable for very long periods of time and then happen all at once. We've had two El Nino cycles that have been very severe, and if we just need to look at Pacifica to know what can happen. The esplanade used to be 160 feet from the, from the cliffs, and it's now falling into the ocean. So that is, with, with the shape of our bay and the wave action that's going to come from the increasing storms and sea level rise in the next 20, 30, 40 years, this is going to become a critical issue, and we should not build there.
Thank you. Robert Cooney, followed by Karen Perry.
I'm Robert Cooney. I live in Miramar. I appreciate the chance to speak, and I appreciate your work and what you do for our community. I came to speak against the Dunes Hotel, partially to counter the developers' offense, or offensive offense with the website and all. I hope what happened to me never happens to you all, because last month I received an email of a study that showed my house and my neighbors were included in a buffer zone of some huge proposed development that nobody had ever heard of. How on earth does this happen? I live in the house on Naples Avenue that my parents built 50 years ago. No one has built, bought, or remodeled there, has ever had any reason to believe that a huge commercial project like this could be considered for the farmland next to our residential community. After the Dune story broke, the online response from the neighbors was so overwhelming that I sent a list to each of you to be immediate, so that you were immediately aware of how the community felt about this shocking proposal. As you may agree, this enormous 47-acre project seems entirely out of scale and out of place for our quiet rural area. A loud, bright, busy convention center with over 200 rooms plus parking and a paved lot for over 170 recreational vehicles is not what anybody here wants. It's not a wise use of a vital part of our coastside community. More light, noise, traffic, and urban sprawl on Highway 1 is not going to make our town more attractive, poor life any better here for local residents. The entire concept makes an unreasonable demand on our vital resources and our quality of life. I don't know if the developers have even taken the time yet from their promotional website and lobbying to officially apply. I gather they don't. And I don't even know if they own the land they want to develop. But my ultimate, perhaps rhetorical, question is, how soon can this proposal be rejected? If this fantasy is actually as inappropriate as it appears, how long and what does it take to dismiss it? As you know, a pitch like this can take up a lot of time and energy of city officials as well as members of the community. I believe the less time we have to spend on entirely unrealistic proposals, the better. Until the city has a workable general plan and the ability to support the needs and ensure the safety of its residents, vast new developments like this should be turned away immediately. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Karen Perry, followed by somebody who lives on 206 Washington Boulevard.
Hi. I also wanted to speak about the Dunes Beach RV Park fiasco. I was going to talk about shooing away SF garter snake yesterday from my, my garden and about all the animals I see in my backyard. Heard an owl last night. There's been an injured raccoon that's been hanging around lately, and I'm directly across the street. My backyard butts up against Highway 1, so I can, if I look over my fence, I can see exactly where this atrocity is supposed to be built. But I want to tell you a real quick story. A few months ago, my husband was having some kind of an allergic reaction, so we went over the hill to urgent care at Mills Hospital. They gave him a shot of epinephrine. He was getting hives. We came home, and suddenly he said, "My lips sting." And I looked at him, and it looked like two tomatoes were growing out of his face. By the time we started down Highway 1, he was, it was difficult to understand him. His tongue was so swollen, he was in complete anaphylactic shock. I'm a former police officer, a 911 dispatcher, and I can drive like a bat out of hell, but I cannot intubate him, and I don't have a red light and siren to get over 92. So I called 911, and I asked the dispatcher, "Do you have an ambulance nearby?" And she said, "We have an ambulance at the coast." And I said, "Well, what, what part of the coast? Prescottadero, Pacifica, or Half Moon Bay?" And she said, "Half Moon Bay." And I said, "Good. I'm pulling over at the Shell Station. I'll be waving my hands." They came, they picked him up, they took him to the hospital. He was in the hospital for a while. Had to have a lot of shots of epinephrine, never figured out what triggered it. But I realized, you know, if, if there's like a balcony collapse or something like that, we, we can't airlift everyone to Stanford. We can't get over 92. We can't get past 1. We don't have a Level 1 trauma center, and let's face it, Seton, that little trauma center, it, it's basically just, I wouldn't even say it's an urgent care. It's nothing. So we're putting our own residents at risk. For what? For visitors coming from out of town? For visitors? We don't know. For all we know, people are going from San Francisco to Santa Cruz, and they're on Megan's list. I don't know who these people are, but I know I'm to be directly across the street from them, and I also know that I have grandchildren who live along the coast, and I'd like to know if there's a medical emergency that they can get the medical care. Thank you.
Thank you. Our mystery guest from Washington Boulevard, followed by Susan Sewer.
Good evening. My name is Robert McComb. I live at 206 Washington, and I'm here to voice my opposition to the Dunes project because I believe that Highway 1 is not suitable for access to that particular facility. It's overcrowded morning, noon, and night, and especially on the weekends when we'd be anticipating hotel visitors, RV visitors, et cetera. The, I have a very difficult time imagining a large RV or a string of large RVs on a Friday evening trying to turn left into that project when they're northbound on Highway 1. I have an equally difficult time imagining a string of RVs pulling out of that campground and turning left to head north on 101 against morning traffic or school traffic in the afternoon. It's an ill-conceived project, for somehow, somebody thinks it's a good idea to strand a hotel and a RV park between two single-family residential areas across the street from an industrial nursery and near some stables. I, I just think the traffic impact is absolutely ludicrous to think that people aren't only going to arrive and stay at that RV park or stay at that hotel. They're going to be going in and out all the time to go downtown, to go to the port, to go to our natural reserves, our hiking trails, and use the area amenities. It's not going to be just arrivals and departures in terms of them coming and going. It's going to be all day, every day for, and in addition to that, I would like to just support the Sea Air Club's position and the Trust for Public Lands position in the letter that they have written to this body and to other people about this particular project. Their reasons are solid. We don't need this project there. We don't want it there. If we're going to put in a hotel and RV park, why don't we just put it close to some infrastructure? Downtown, shopping, or the port, or someplace where it absolutely makes sense. To strand it in the middle of a residential zone makes no sense at all. Thank you for listening. I appreciate all of your work on this.
Thank you. Ms. Sewer, followed by Ian Dickey.
I'm Susan Swear. I live at 206 Washington. I appreciate that you are not formally discussing the proposed Dunes Beach Hotel and RV Park at this time. However, I, along with many others, am here to register my strong disapproval of this proposed project. I'm a neighbor who lives immediately to the north of the project. I am not against development of the property per se, but I think it would be a tragedy to consider that site for a 200-unit hotel and 100-unit RV park, particularly given the disruption to the neighborhoods and the lack of sufficient infrastructure in Half Moon Bay to support a development of that size. I'm here to ask you to say no to the currently proposed high-density construction projects that, that are coming to the surface. I agree wholeheartedly with the Sea Air Club's assessment that this proposed project does not conform with the Half Moon Bay local coastal program policies related to the area's designation as planned development. There are many specific details of the proposal I object to, such as the proposal for fire pits, but I'll save those for another time when you open formal discussion. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dickey, followed by Mark Gradstein.
My name is Ian Dickey. I live at 59 Alameda Avenue in Miramar. I've been a longtime resident of Half Moon Bay. I've lived in Miramar for 20 years. I've been a contractor, both residential and commercial, for almost 30 years. So if people who know me, I'm the first one to say, you know, if you didn't want them to build there, you should have bought the property, you know? But with that said, I need to say that there is something called building within the community. And with that, I mean, if you take a look at that property and what we're dealing with, every side of that property and the infrastructure around it is an issue. You have one of the only group campsites in within 150 miles that's going to be, I don't know, I'm very familiar with coastal towns because I've grown up my entire life in the beach community. I know RV parks. I know how loud they are at night. I know generators run all night. RVs start up. They're running in and out of there, which basically means that you're going to put that whole campsite, that one group campsite, is going to be washed out. Then you're dealing with a state park beach, and we, everyone who lives in Half Moon Bay realizes how taxed the state parks are. There is, there is no way that the state parks are going to dump any money into that to build up their infrastructure, and you dump 300 people using that beach access, the parking lot, the toilets, it's going to be a complete disaster. Then on the other side, you have a residential community, and they're going to put a hotel right there, and everyone knows that the, the back of the hotel is going to end up facing that community. You're going to have 24 hours dumpsters, smell, loud noises, light pollution. There's nothing positive that's going to come out of that. And everybody who's lived there and has dumped their life savings into those houses is at risk of losing money because of this project. Then you're going to deal with the highway, which everyone has been talking about, and there's just, we can barely get out of our community. When I buy a car, all I can think about is the acceleration of the car, because I put my life at risk every time I have to pull out into that highway. I have a kid who's just getting his driver's license, and I absolutely refuse to let him make a left-hand turn onto Highway 1. So I really don't see how clogging it up more is benefiting anybody. Over the past just two years alone, we've had insane sewer leaks into the ocean. We have, every time there's any kind of a storm, my electricity goes out at my house for days on end. Our cable goes out. I just don't understand how overloading our utilities at that high of a level is going to benefit, benefit anybody in that whole area. The real issue here is the infrastructure of this project, our community, and especially that spot that they're proposing it for, just cannot handle it. I'm a builder. There is, if someone brought that property to me and said, "Hey, can you build this?", the first thing I would say to them is, "You're going to spend an incredible amount of money just trying to get all the utilities and be, and make it safe for someone, for the community around it." It's just going to, as it is, we're busting at the seams. I mean, I, I don't know, we've had hundreds of thousands of raw sewage dumps into the ocean this year, and then you're telling me we're, we're going to have a new sewer system, you know? I just think that the proposal is a little bit overboard, not a little bit overboard, but way overboard. And I'll just say one more thing and leave it at this. Over my course of living in beach communities, I've seen beaches and the adjacent properties to these beaches ruined by a simple, unthought-out access that was brought down to that beach. If people don't think about how the people going down there are going to pick up that garbage and get it out of there, within a year, that beach is a complete dump, because no one is taking care of it. And I don't think that this whole project has been completely thought out to a point where it even is worth a proposal. Thanks.
Thank you for your heartfelt message. Mark Gradstein, followed by Matt Berman.
My name is Mark. I live on Naples Avenue, two doors down from Bob Cooney, closer to the proposed RV Park, right on the edge. When I first learned about it, on a personal level, it was, it was heartbreaking, but on a community level, it was really flabbergasting to me that we need more hotel rooms. And I called around and spoke to people in Bed and Breakfasts who run them, and people in local hotels, and they all seemed to say we're at something, I think as a community, like 70% occupancy. I may be wrong about that, but it's certainly not 100%, or people being turned away all the time. And now we're talking about a Hyatt and Dunes Beach. And it's, of course, Dunes Beach that got my attention. The Hyatt was way downtown, and I thought, oh, well, I guess James Ford most liked having a neighbor, and, you know, the, the, the restaurant down there was going to be happy to have some hotel rooms, but of course, they're not. Maybe James's, I don't know. I haven't discussed it with them. My car hasn't needed repair lately. But I think about those fields and that view from, from Highway 1, looking out across them at the ocean. And I think of the horrible backup we had in the, the ditch right next to mine, my house, last year, when I was out there on President's Weekend putting sandbags around my house, because it had backed up and was flooding down the flood plain towards Bob's house and our other neighbors next door. And I'm thinking, why do we need more buildings here? And of course, what this gentleman just said about an RV park, I've never lived near one, but do we need one? We've got plenty of RV parks, and I think there's one that's being built up in El Granada. So I guess I would ask the question, do we need this? And if the answer isn't yes, that should be the end of it, because we have plenty of traffic, we have plenty of pollutants. Building tarmac over this land is going to make it that much harder for things to drain off. We're going to have more flooding, I would guess. I'm not a, you know, an expert on, on climate and stuff, but I'm fearful that we, we really could be damaging the topography. I know we've got endangered species there. We've got those frogs and the garter snakes and people. And, and I just hope this nightmare can go away quickly. As Bob said, it's, I couldn't agree with him more. I just, breaks my heart to think that this is possibly going to happen.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Berman's comments are actually for Agenda Item 1B. If there are not any more public comments for the public forum, I'll close public forum. Not seeing any, I will close public forum. So we're going to move to, Jill, did you have any comments to make before we move on?
Just briefly, we anticipated continued public comment tonight on this topic, and as Chair Hernandez noted, they, they are not able to give you any discussion about this item. I just wanted to give you a quick update, however. We are not yet in receipt of an application. We expect one soon. If you haven't already signed up for the city's email list, you can go to the city's website, hmbcity.com. There's a way to sign up for information, and we have an email list that we're building up for the Surf Dunes project, as well as a number of other things going on in town. So we encourage you to, to sign up there, and we intend to use that for keeping folks updated.
Thank you, Jill. So the next item we have is the Planning Commission business, so Item 1A. So, Item 1A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. This item has to do with acknowledging the approval of a temporary tent at Ocean Colony. And it's something that the commission has reviewed in the past for previous years. Nothing has really changed from what's taken place in the past. And it's, let's see, it's installation of a 60-by-100 dining tent, two ancillary tents for food preparation and bussing, three 25-foot-tall flagpoles, eight-foot-by-12-foot stage platform for charitable and other special events. We do, we are, we do ask that one minor change take place to the notice of exemption. We referenced the, the wrong CEQA exemption, but we'll make that change before we actually make the, approve the temporary use. So, what the Planning Commission has asked to, to do this evening is acknowledge the, the approval of the director for the temporary tent. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
From the process perspective, we just want to note why this is before you, and also, the, the project applicant is here tonight, in case you have any questions. The director can approve temporary uses of this nature. However, I can't do that until the Planning Commission has acknowledged the use. If you have any concerns about it, then you can call it up into your forum. We anticipate that we can proceed, and all the paperwork is ready to go tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Scott?
Yeah, and I brought this up last time. You know, it seems to me that the purpose of this ruling, the ordinance, is in effect to allow something to be fairly quickly approved so that, particularly in this case, commercial issues are involved. Now, the fact that it was postponed, to me, is an issue. Taking up our time on something like this. And the second part is, this is not the first year that this one has come before us, become before us, excuse me, in the years past. So, unless there was an appeal, unless somebody from Ocean Colony in effect said, "I don't like this", you know, to me, acknowledging in effect means perhaps sending Planning Commissioners an email saying, unless there are any objections, unless you want this brought up, this is what I'm going to do. And again, I think there's a waste of time, money to, in effect, do something like this year, and you're out. So, I think you have the duty to make that decision, but taking up our time, if there's no real issues on this, I think it's just a waste. So, I just want to put that down for the record.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We can talk to the city attorney about any options we might have. This has been our practice, and we believe that we're implementing the code correctly, but sometimes they can find ways for us to, to work through these issues, and we understand your comments. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Does the applicant wish to add any comments? Okay. I'd like to have us just acknowledge that we've received this, so, thank you. Close this item, and we'll move on to Item 1B. 32 Jenna Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is an item that was previously scheduled for the Planning Commission meeting earlier this month, but was continued to a date certain of this evening. The project includes conversion of these existing residents on the site to an accessory dwelling unit and construction of a 6,104-square-foot, single-family residence, which has been reduced from the previous proposal of 7,945 square feet. The permits requested are coastal development permit, architectural review, and use permit, permit history. The house, the existing house and a larger main house was approved back in 2001 by the Planning Commission. Total square footage was roughly 7,000 square feet. The guest house was then constructed in 2004. Shortly afterwards, we received a formal withdraw of the approval from the applicant for the main house. Since that time, a new owner has submitted for construction of the new house, and the Planning Commission reviewed the, the project back in September of 2016. Planning Commission continued the project to a date uncertain, and the Planning Commission reviewed a new design last July. Since that time, the, the project has been redesigned once again. As a reminder, here is the site plan, and the approximate proposed footprint is shown in red here. So, at the previous meeting, the, the Planning Commission, let's see, had, did have some, you know, several things for the, you know, items that you wanted us to take a look at. And one of them was habitat management. And in that, a biological resource assessment was prepared in 2015, and was circulated for 45 days. And comments from the Coastal Commission were received and suggestions of strengthening the mitigation measures, as well as concerns related to the poison hemlock within the vicinity. The Coastal Commission and city staff then met on the site with the project biologist to collaborate and discuss the concerns identified on the comment letter. And an addendum to the biological report was prepared. The addendum included the strengthened mitigation measures from the Coastal Commission, and those mitigation measures were integrated into the draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration. The Planning Commission did have some concerns about design compatibility, specifically related to the massing and bulk of the proposed house and compatibility with the existing house and the surrounding homes in the neighborhood. So, this is the, the latest and greatest east elevation. And the home has been reduced in height down to 22 feet and a reduction in floor area. The two train, these two changes in particular address many of the, the items that the, design items that the Planning Commission mentioned at the previous meeting. As comparison, this is the previous east elevation. And notice that many of the larger elements have been eliminated from the project. The rotunda, the two-story entry feature, as well as the balcony here facing east. And then, this slide shows the original approval that was later withdrawn, which is fairly similar to the, the design that's proposed this evening. Additionally, the lot coverage has increased from the previous design. More of a, you know, that includes the courtyard here. So, the lot coverage is 5,495 square feet, which is less than the original approval, but more than the previous design that the Planning Commission reviewed back in July. And as a comparison, this is the, the old blueprint plans that have been scanned that were originally approved by the Planning Commission back in 2001. And then, here's a side-by-side comparison of the, the new west elevation on the top and then the previous design that was reviewed by the Planning Commission last July. And there are a few, a few items that the Planning Commission requested as far as the windows facing west. And as you can see, this is quite a bit less glazing than the previous design on the bottom there. And then, also, there were some, a few comments about the, the placement of the bathroom on the, the previous design facing the trail easement, as well as the creek. And that bathroom has been integrated into the, the second story. So, one of the other items that the Planning Commission requested was that Public Works take a closer look at the, the grading and drainage plan and the stormwater management. We did have Public Works staff take a closer look, and they are comfortable with the preliminary design of the drainage plan that's, that was included in the, the plan set this evening. More detail will be required with the building permit submittal, but Public Works is comfortable with what's shown on the plan set this evening. So, in regard to the Matucci subdivision appeal meeting agreement, the Planning Commission did ask that this be used as a, as a guide for the, the new design. And we've gone through it, and the applicable items in the Matucci subdivision agreement have, the, the new design does conform with, with the exception of Number 1. So, I've, not that you can really read it, but I've circled it here. And, which requires 134.6 square feet between, linear feet, sorry, between the, the proposed house and the neighboring house next door. Now, as you know, the, we have several different buffer requirements that we're dealing with on this site. And if Number 1 was to, to, if we were to conform with Number 1, then we would basically be left with the green square here for a developable envelope for the new house. So, in a sense, it's, we don't see it possible to, to conform to Number 1, given the buffer requirements of the creek and the, the wetlands that have been identified in the biological report. Another, another question that was received was whether or not the, the trail easement can be located in the buffer. And it is called, trails and scenic overlooks are listed as an allowed use within the riparian buffer area. So, we are comfortable with the, the location of the, the ripe, the proposed trail easement as shown on the site plan. And then, this slide shows the, the revised landscape plan. And noted on the side of the landscape plan here is the reduction of the, the height of the trees to seven feet. Now, we, we've also added a condition of approval, or modified language to a condition of approval. Let's see. Condition A7 that requires the reduction of the, the tree height and landscaping to seven feet along the eastern property line. And that can take place during construction in conformance with the mitigation measures that require biological monitoring and surveys before any vegetation removal. This slide shows the, the rendering of the new house as well, or the proposed house, as well as the existing house on the site. And one additional change to the conditions of approval that you may have read in the memorandum is that we did relocate the short-term rental deed restriction to the Section D within the conditions of approval, requiring the short-term deed restriction prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, instead of the building permit. Now, in the case that the city does adopt a short-term rental ordinance, this condition would not apply. So, also included in your packet was a draft mitigated negative declaration that was prepared, and that includes the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And it contains the mitigation measures that were recommended by the biologist and then strengthened by the Coastal Commission. So, staff is supportive of the project. It's submitted, and I would be happy to answer any questions and clarifying questions, and recommend taking public comments and Planning Commission discussion. The, both the applicant and the architect are here, and they'd be happy to speak as well.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any clarifying questions for Scott or city staff?
Just one, Scott. So, we have a memo here, and it came up during the last meeting. The question about the, the riparian buffer and the distance from the riparian buffer and whether the existing home there was constructed within that buffer or whatnot. Can you just sort of summarize just for, for the public, just what, what's in your memo here?
Yes, absolutely. So, you're correct, we did include some comparison aerial photographs within the memorandum that was provided to you. And what we discovered is that it appears that the house was built in conformance with the buffer requirements back in 2001, or 2004. Since that time, the riparian vegetation has increased and built, grown closer to the house. So, it's unclear whether or not the, the house conforms, the existing house conforms to the buffer requirements today. But, it's, you know, it's our conclusion that the buffer requirement is actually working by allowing the expansion of the riparian vegetation.
So, does the new proposed structure comply with that buffer?
Yes, absolutely. And that's shown on the, the proposed site plan.
Thank you.
If there aren't any other clarifying questions, I'll ask the applicant if he wishes to speak. Oh, we have a, all right. Go ahead.
Good evening. Fred Strath, the architect. Since the previous submittal that you reviewed, I was asked to kind of join the team and give assistance. The major thing you could see from the side-by-side overlay of the two projects, you can see that we've gotten rid of nearly all of the second-story portion of the house, reduced the height from 28 to 22 feet, and tried to make it more in keeping with the project that was approved a few years ago. So, those were some of the main efforts that were involved in the project. Bruce Chan, who is the landscape architect, who's been involved, I guess, for quite some time in the project, certainly could answer some of your other questions. But, staff has pretty much covered a lot of the issues, so, be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, several questions on the Pilar Cidos Creek Trail designation. Not sure whether you have that on your slide pack, but Sheet A1.1 kind of has a hashed line in it that, I guess I can pull out my, my big one, although, pretty hard to do it, a small one that has a designation on it. Let me see if I can find it again. Lost paper. Let's see, 1.1. There's a, there's a hatch line that runs through the property that runs through the subject property, the accessory dwelling unit, and it runs right through the property. So, kind of tell me how that fits in with what we're, we're doing over here.
So, just so I'm clear, the, the line you're referring to is the, this one here?
Actually, it's that other fine line there, that one, yeah. That, that part of the drawing. So, according to this, it says Pilar Cidos Creek Trail, at least on my description. Yeah, it's pointing to this line over here. Or is, what's pointing to?
I think the arrow, so, I think there's some ambiguity in the diagram. So, the diagram points to two things. Either the hashed trail or the hashed line. Can you show us where the trail would go, Scott?
Yes, so, the, the trail is the, the hash, the hash. Yes, so the trail is the hashed area here.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
I guess that answers my question. So, that other line is what, the buffer zone line, or what?
Correct, 100-foot riparian scrub buffer.
Okay, and the other issue, I mean, I went to the property, and apparently there is a fence on the property just to the east of that, and then there's the accessory dwelling unit. Sure didn't seem like very much space for a trail there. I mean, I'm looking at the detail on the Sheet A1.1, but it sure seemed like there was a lot less room there than what's shown on the -- on this plan over here. So, how wide is that, 10 feet? I mean, I, as I say, from what I looked at that, it seemed that 10 feet would put you right against the accessory dwelling unit. So, am I wrong in that?
Well, I think what's going on is that the amount of vegetation through that area makes the corridor seem narrower than it actually is. And the reality is, is, you know, once we get to a point where the trail is, you know, it's -- we're ready to design and propose the new trail, you know, much of the vegetation would need to be removed.
The other issue, that trail apparently goes into the driveway of the house that's already there. Is that an issue, the fact that cars are coming in there? And, you know, when I walked the property, I looked at that, and so that's almost half the driveway going into the property.
So, you're referring to the access and utility easement?
Right, the access and utility easement.
Why the trail doesn't extend into the access and utility easement? I think it is possible to include language that would require the trail to extend into the easement.
Okay, all right.
Are there any other clarifying questions? Okay.
Just one request, excuse me. The existing house has kind of a concrete tile roof, kind of in gray color. We'd like to at least consider the possibility that might want to match that with the main house, so.
I'm sorry, are you asking for us to give you approval to change the roof on the existing structure?
No.
You want to have the new structure match the old structure's roof?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a few public comments here, so I'm going to open it up for public comment. Matt Berman, I called your name earlier, I'll have you speak, followed by Faden Hombo, followed by Mike Farrar.
Hi, my name is Matt Berman. My property borders the property in question. I also speak for several of the other neighbors of this property who have shared their views with me. I'd like to start with a few thank yous. I first want to thank Faden for his catch on the wording of the map. That was before the last meeting, that was, I totally missed that. I really want to thank the Planning Commission, and especially the planning staff, who have listened, heard our concerns, took them in the Matucci agreement seriously, and worked with the applicants to get the plan for the property to conform to that agreement. I've been dealing with the city for 15 years, and this openness to hearing the concerns of citizens has been unique in my experience. I can't tell you how grateful I am for that. Second, do I understand that you are the applicant? I would like to thank you for your openness and flexibility in working with the city and the neighborhood to meet our concerns and abide by the agreement. Believe me when I tell you that I know what it can be like working through all this, and I really appreciate your effort and willingness to accommodate your new neighbors. Different people have had different concerns with this property. I just got a quick look at the most recent update today on the website, but it looks like, as far as I can tell, a lot of them have -- maybe all of them have been addressed. Most of the neighbors concerned had to do with the size of the house and the trees and hedge that were planted by the previous owners in their stated deliberate attempt to hoard the views for themselves and block the views of the rest of the neighborhood. As I understand it, and please do correct me if I'm wrong, I'm certainly no expert in reading these plans, in addition to the changes to the house structure, the trees will be cut down to seven feet in height and kept that way, and the hideous and mostly now dead hedge will be removed and replaced with attractive low plantings and fences will be kept opening -- open, I hope that's correct. We're so close, maybe we're actually there, I couldn't quite tell. There are a few minor things, the cypress trees have been -- the word cypress has been eliminated now, so it just says trees, right? So, that's great. You have to understand that we've been burned before by insufficiently clear wording on things like this that have been deliberately used to subvert the intent of plans and agreements. I want to make sure the sentence is not open to interpretation. The way I interpreted it, I hope this is correct, is that all trees and other plantings along the east property line will be trimmed and kept to a height no greater than seven feet in perpetuity. And I hope that language is clear, that this travels with the property to any future owners. So, if I'm correct on all that, and if I've understood all this correctly, then there are only two things left for me to say. Thank you to everybody involved, and welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you for your spirit of public camaraderie.
I used to watch the sunset from our home. Now, I have to watch it on Channel 7 at the weather report, to a point where I actually, the last five, 10 years, I just don't even go in my backyard. It's heartbreaking to have what's behind me there, and that it was an absolute deliberate deception that created it, in my opinion. I took the time this morning to count how many trees are directly behind my neighbors and my home. The back of our two homes together measure 80 feet wide, with a 10-foot backyard. There are 44 trees. This is one tree within 11 feet of our house, every 1.8 feet. Forty-one of these trees are planted 11 feet or closer to our fence. The remaining three are in front of those trees, 24 feet from the fence, up by the turnaround inlaid brick part of the driveway. There are 26 more trees between Oak Avenue and the side of my home. This distance is less than 40 feet wide, a total of 70 trees in all. Over half of them are 40 to 50 feet tall. These trees are not planted in straight rows, they're staggered to block our views purposely by the last owner. Spite fences, hedges, and trees are prohibited in the city, and we have voiced our concerns on these spite trees and their number in the past. These trees are also planted where the coastside trail path is supposed to be located between Oak Avenue and Cypress Avenue. Want to ask you, why does the term "trimmed down"? I want to ask you, what does the term "trimmed down to seven feet from the ground" mean? Are all 70 trees going to be trimmed like Christmas trees? Are they going to be topped down to the height where we can at least see our sunsets from our second-story window? These trees are blocking the views we were promised by the Matucci project in 2001. Why are they being allowed to stand there at all if they are blatantly spite trees? 70 trees! 110 feet, 11 feet from our fence. I suggest all trees over seven feet should be cut down. They weren't here when I bought my home, and they were never supposed to be via the Matucci report. If you're going to permit these trees, how do you open up a view? By simply trimming 70 staggered trees. And how often will they be trimmed? What legal safeguards are in place to keep them trimmed, once the owners are given the go-ahead to build?
Thank you for your comments.
This is Mike Farrar, speaking for the Sierra Club, and also as the former Planning Commission Chair that put his signature on the 2001 permit, and that negotiated the 100-foot buffer zone. Before I get to the 100-foot buffer zone, I just want to really express my appreciation for the degree to which you've tried to be accommodating to Faden and his neighbors. You may not know this, but Faden happens to be one of our unique citizens, that is a talented musician, who once played with the Jefferson Airplane, and was one of the founders and operators of the Saturday -- what was the name of that?
No Strings.
No Strings Attached Breakfast, that was given away free to anybody that came. It's so that we're trying to respect his position in the community is a good thing, and I'd like to commend all of you for the degree that you're trying to do that. To the 100-foot buffer zone, which I negotiated with the applicant, I want to say that, yes, it would be fair if that is measured from the buffer zone that was extant at that time, rather than a buffer zone that has moved. I'm okay with that, I just want to make sure, from reading the drawings, that there actually is a 100-foot buffer zone here, now, as it was before. And the reason I ask that question is because it seemed as though landscaping was coming into a 100-foot buffer zone, which I don't think is permitted in a buffer zone. So, with that, once again, thank you for everything you've done so far, and I really hope to never have to speak to this project again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments? Not seeing any other green cards or anybody running to the microphone. I'm going to close public comment and turn it back to the Planning Commission for our discussion. I see everybody struggling with where to start, so I'll jump in and relieve you of that concern. So, I am interested in a couple of things as it pertains to the trail. I have spoken with city staff a little bit about what's appropriate and allowable with respect to the trailhead, and read the staff reports. I do commend the applicant for being willing to just embrace the trailhead in a spirit of cooperation. I do think we need to look at extending the trailhead all the way to the public, you know, the appropriate public point of access, so if it goes through the driveway. The design is lacking in appropriate connection to sidewalks or other trails. There's also the trail onto the Oak Avenue Park, so it'd just be good to kind of spell that out, so that we have an understanding of exactly how this is going to fit in. I had questions earlier today about how the trail area would be maintained, and I'm going to actually ask city staff to comment on this, because I think, from my understanding, with the buffer zone, and this kind of adjusts the comments from Mike Farrar, we have a buffer zone that's established, we have some fencing that's established. I'm a little concerned about until the trail actually gets built, who's going to be responsible, how are we going to be responsible for maintaining, making sure that somebody doesn't put other structures in that area? So, if you could address the concerns about how do we make sure we don't have some legal issue in the future? How do we make sure that the riparian zone is properly respected and address the comments from Mr. Farrar about the 100-foot buffer zone?
I'll take a crack at that. With regards to the riparian buffer, there needs to be a split-rail fence along that buffer edge, so there's going to be a real clear demarcation between the developed part of the property and the portion that is really going to be left in a much more natural state. We noted, and we would recommend, clarifying the landscaping condition. I do believe the landscape plans showed some landscaping in the buffer, and that is not the intention for this plan, so we'll offer you a friendly amendment if you are going in that direction. So, with the fence, we really see that clarity will happen in terms of what can be developed and what can't be. As Scott reviewed, permitted uses within buffers include the kind of trail that we've envisioned. I'm not sure if we talked about the intention for the width of that easement. The easement is 20 feet wide. There's no intent to have a 20-foot-wide trail. What we're hoping for is that this additional width gives some wiggle room for improving the alignment of a trail around different kinds of features, or if there's some kind of plant or topography that we're trying to avoid, so that we have more range to get it put in the right place. This segment is just one of piecing together what we would hope for eventually to have as the Pillar Cidos Creek Trail. We recognize that it could take a long time to get all the segments, and we might not be able to get them all. This one is especially useful, because we do believe it can be connected to the trail that is in Oak Avenue Park, and that's -- that is actually the goal. It isn't that we'd have everybody getting on the trail via Jenna Lane. We would see that as being pretty low use, but that the heavier use would be coming through the park, and literally off of Naomi Patridge alignment, in fact. So, I hope that's helpful, and I'm not sure if I answered all your questions, so if there's anything else, remind me.
I think you've covered my principal issues. I'm going to turn it over to my fellow commissioners, Brian.
So, if I understood you correctly, Jill, you proposed to offer an amendment that would address the buffer from the riparian area. Right. And then, and I'm looking on the landscape plan, I'm not sure what sheet it is, L1.1, sort of on one part of it, it says existing cypress trees along east property line shall be trimmed to a height of seven foot, and then up above, it says existing cypress trees along east property line shall be trimmed to a height of 15 feet. Is that in conflict with the conditions? It's an old plan. So, it's correct to say that all existing cypress trees would be trimmed to a height of seven feet? Or whatever trees?
And that was just another note, and I think it's really helpful to hear the public comment, because I -- staff doesn't always get a chance to go quite as in-depth onto the property. If the trees are that dense, you may want to add something to that condition about thinning the trees. There are some trees that are just not intended to be maintained at a seven-foot height, and especially at that density, so we think that would be fair. I don't think that's in conflict with what the applicants already agreed to do in terms of the height. It would just make it a lot easier to maintain.
Are there any other questions? Yeah.
Do you want me to finish, Brian? Do you have other questions?
No, no other questions. I'm sorry. No, no other questions. Sorry.
You know, I was at the first meeting, certainly this is a change. I mean, I didn't expect to hear kudos from some of the neighbors giving this project, but I guess those who live nearby have taken a much closer look at what the changes are, and they seem to conform with what the commission suggested as well as what the neighbors indicated at the prior meeting. So I think from, if we make a few changes to the conditions, I'm certainly comfortable that what I'm seeing here conforms to both the agreement and, I guess, the spirit of what we talked about last time. So that's my comment.
John?
Welcome to the project, Mr. Strathby. It's a good move that the client did this. I was very critical of this project when it first came through. I think you, both you and the owner have done a great job of changing the scale of this to be similar to the scale of the neighborhood, so when people are looking at this from the beach, it really fits in very well, and I compliment you on that. I have looked at the project, and it did a great job. It's not necessarily a particular style that I would do, that's not relevant. The project is just fine. You did a really good job, and thank you very much. I'd be curious, this is maybe not a point worth bringing up, but this old M'atucci Agreement that talks about distance between houses, when I look at the rest of that neighborhood, I'm wondering if that distance actually exists between any of the other houses up and down that neighborhood. That being said, this conforms with the regulations we have, and I'm totally supportive of this project, and thank you very much. I noticed your license is even a shorter number than mine, so you must be, maybe we're similar ages and we just don't look like it.
You're looking good for '74. So I, okay, it's like, you're not '74. Wow. So I also want to commend you on the changes that you guys have made to the property. Having spent some time on the coast now, I think the owners or whoever ends up living in this house is going to have a much better experience. This is, you've really kind of addressed the feedback we've provided, and it's, you're taking advantage of the location quite effectively. I am concerned, again, going back to the project, the landscaping, the concept of spite trees was raised. One of my earliest experiences in Half Moon Bay was sitting in meetings where people were referencing the M'atucci Agreement when I was going through the planning process myself, and I know that the line of sight to the ocean is an area of concern, and the area there is, it's really overgrown. So I'd like to actually ask city staff and maybe our attorney about options we have for putting teeth into the seven-foot restriction and the thinning of the trees. It's one thing to have a requirement to do something, but if there's no penalty or pain that is felt by the applicant, then, or the owner, then, you know, the city's not effect, very good at, historically speaking, not very good at enforcing code in a lot of areas. So I'd be interested if there's something we can do to just say, you know, if the applicant doesn't do this, the city can hire landscapers at the applicant's expense to maintain the site. And I don't know how my other commissioners feel about that, but that's one of the principal concerns that's historically been raised on the property is that you've lost your view of the ocean, and it's a public good, and so I just want to open that up to city staff and our attorney to consider that.
Well, one thing that I was thinking about in order to make this condition of the seven-foot trees more enforceable was my understanding, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, is right now it's contained on the plans but not necessarily directly referenced in a condition of approval. Is that correct?
No, it is in the condition. We added language to condition A7, requiring or limiting the height of the landscaping to seven feet along the eastern property line.
I think I have an old version, maybe. Does somebody have that I could look at really quick? Sorry. Apologize for the delay. Yeah, so this does, thank you, that does address my concern, and so that does make the condition an enforceable condition of the approval, that is an ongoing requirement to maintain that seven-foot limit, and the condition E5 clarifies that that condition runs with the land and therefore can be enforced against subsequent property owners. It's not the city's practice to have the city step in and enforce conditions if it's not being maintained by the property owner in a clause that you've suggested, Chair. I'm a little concerned about the precedent there, as the city already has the ability to enforce conditions through its kind of enforcement mechanisms, and I'll let Jill maybe speak a little bit more about how that's usually done.
While the method, I mean, as an owner of an empty lot at one point, I know the city could charge me to go mow the lot or have the fire district charge me to mow my lot, which is sufficiently expensive that I bought a plow and rented a plow and cleared my lot. But my concern is while I understand the precedent that this might set, and then we're starting to have things buried in individual deed restrictions and so forth, my concern is there's another precedent which the previous owner of the property, when they entered into the agreement, has sort of ignored many aspects of the agreement, and we now have a situation where the public feels like it's been duped, is the only way to describe it. And the concern is maybe we don't have to do it in something specific to this property, but I am concerned that we address the issue at hand, which is, over time, this has gotten out of control, there's been no enforcement, and the public feels frustrated.
Yeah. And just to clarify that, the M'atucci subdivision agreement was not an agreement with the city. It was a private agreement between the developer at the time and the neighboring property owners, and therefore, like any other private agreement, is between the two parties to the agreement to enforce, so it was not the city's obligation or really even jurisdiction to enforce that agreement. Nonetheless, I understand the proposal you've made about adding more language to the condition here that says the city has the right to go in and do it without, or to trim the trees if they're not being trimmed at the owner's expense, and we could try to put something together, but I'd like Jill just to provide a little more background about how the codes are, or how the conditions are currently enforced.
I'd like to address that, but also talk a little bit more about things we could consider with this condition to make it easier, in particular, to maintain. I'd like to see this set up for success for the property owner and also for communication throughout change of property ownership over time. So the condition can be enforced insofar as our Assistant City Attorney reviewed, is the condition's very clear with the height limit and then that this runs with the land, so we understand that's going forward. The city does not typically record conditions of approval against property. We could include this particular condition along with some of the other things that are going to be recorded, like the trail easement. We could consider some kind of vehicle like that that doesn't make it easier for the city to enforce, but it absolutely assures that somebody buying the property will be well-aware that this is applicable to the site. I, in particular, though, would really like the applicant to submit a landscape revision to the eastern property line showing a long-term planting plan that can be maintained at seven feet in height. I think it's sort of setting yourself up for a real challenge with the variety of trees that are there and how quickly they can grow in a wet year, for example, and just get away from you. So I would encourage you to consider making an amendment to having a little more control over what's planted on the eastern property line. I haven't, unfortunately, had a chance to talk to the applicant before the meeting in detail about that, although I know that they agreed to the seven-foot height limit. I think the density of the trees probably makes that really expensive to handle, and perhaps this might be a favorable solution. I don't know if the landscape architect wants to... Can you go to the microphone?
So that comment was off the record. Putting in something else, some other plant material that's more easily controllable?
So would a sort of acceptable condition would be to require the applicant to submit a revised landscape plan, subject to review and approval of staff, that provides for landscape that can be maintained at seven feet height with appropriate spacing?
Vine shrubs, ground cover, no, nothing beyond a dwarf type of a tree. Yep.
Okay, so I think we're, what I've heard is we need to have a landscaping plan. Probably if we're doing that, it's a good opportunity to provide a little clarity around where the trailhead ends and starts, or the easement for the trailhead ends and starts. And then thinning of the trees would be part of the landscaping plan. Are any of the trees there considered heritage trees? Okay. And then we also have the recommendation to record the landscaping and landscaping restriction in the deed. Are there any other items?
Roofing material? Probably not.
I think the roofing material is technically... Yes, please.
We don't want to run afoul of any state or federal laws in removing them. Working in other jurisdictions, there are rules about trimming trees if they're providing habitat to endangered species. So while we're fine with this condition, we also realize that there's a flip side to it, is that we may be prevented by federal law from treating the trees in a certain manner. I just want to have that on the record.
I think the expectation is that a tree or two may survive, but the situation now needs to be remediated, and so your landscaping plan is something that should be worked out with the city. I think that as long as the views to the ocean aren't substantially blocked, I think most people would be happy with a tree or two because it adds to the value of the neighborhood.
If I could, maybe staff's read on this, just appreciate that concern, and I understand what you're saying. I think really what I'm concerned with is the potential for nesting, breeding birds that might be of special status, and there's certain construction windows, correct, that could allow for those trees to be addressed. And I think, I'm not sure if it's the right one, but we have some mitigation measures in the initial study that exactly address that tree work being done outside of those, so I think your concern is addressed.
True. Good point, Brian. Les? Okay, can I get a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution, approving a coastal development permit, use permit, and architectural review to allow the construction of a new two-story, 22 feet in height, 6104 square feet residence at 32 Jenna Lane and the planned unit zoning district and the planned development district with the amendment to add a condition requiring that the applicant submit a landscape plan for review and approval by staff that provides species appropriate for maintaining a seven-foot height and appropriate spacing on the eastern property line.
And extends, provides an explanation of the trail easement?
And extends and provides an explanation of the trail easement and... Go ahead and record the deed, record the limits on the, was I intend to add that on the deed?
Deed, yep.
So that understood?
Can I get a second?
Second?
Can we get a voice vote?
Okay, vote for Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner DeMong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holt?
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes for.
Okay, this item is closed. Congratulations on your project, and thank you all for the civil discourse on this item. The next item on the agenda is the Director's Report.
We'll spare you tonight. I'll just acknowledge what you'll have at your next meeting on June 12th. Don't miss it if you hopefully can be there. We will have an accessory dwelling unit ordinance for your consideration based on your last meeting, and you will also see the city's capital improvement program for consideration of general plan conformance.
Thank you. We'll close. Are there any questions for Jill? Not seeing any, any Planning Commissioner communications?
Unless plans change, I won't be here for the June 12th.
I would ask my fellow commissioners to look at their travel schedules, and please email staff around any planned dates you're not going to be here, and maybe for the next meeting, if we could get, if you have that data, if you could also let us know what meetings city is already not planning to have, a Planning Commission meeting, so we can just be a little more coordinated here. I know for one, I have a pretty heavy travel schedule, but I'm happy to dial in from whatever country or remote location I'm at, at whatever time of day if needed. So with that, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.